Item number one, acceptance of meeting minutes, discussion and possible action and vote with regard to the acceptance of meeting minutes in the meetings of April 4th and 25th, May 1st, 2nd, 3rd, and 18th, 2017, to be accepted and approved by the Town Council. Do I have a motion to approve? Is there a...? Motion's been made by Councilman Juicy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Ameri. Any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I just have it. Item number two, peddler license for Jennifer Wolfinger, DBA Wolfies Freezer Delights, discussion and possible vote with regard to the issuance of a summons to appear related to the renewal of peddler license for Jennifer Wolfinger, DBA Wolfies Freezer Delights at 33 Atlantic Boulevard. Do I have a motion to issue a summons? Is there anyone here from Wolfies Freezer Delights? Do I have a motion to cancel the license? Motion's been made by Councilwoman Brady, seconded by Councilman Juicy. Any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number three, vicuulating license for Balamino Caveco doing business as Ranzio's Pizza, discussion and possible vote with regard to the issuance of a summons to appear related to the renewal of vicuulating license for Balamino Caveco doing businesses at Ranzio's Pizza at 35 Smithfield Road. Gentlemen, upon checking this out, his license is not renewed, he's got a tax problem, but everything else is in order. His food management certificate is in order, his health department certificate is in order, and he just recently hired a new attorney, and the new attorney just came on board, and he's asking for a continuance. So I'm gonna make a motion that we continue this with the understanding that between now and August, they get in touch with Claudette and make arrangements for that payment of that, of the taxes.
I'll second.
I make the motion.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilwoman Brady, seconded by Councilman Di Lorenzo. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item number four, introduction of ordinance number 17-006, discussion and vote of the introduction of ordinance 17-006. In ordinance amending chapter 19, article 7, section 19-30 of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of North Providence entitled "No Parking on Certain Streets Generally," to provide for certain parking restrictions on Monitor Street in the Town of North Providence. Do I have a motion to introduce ordinance 17-006? Motion's been made by Councilwoman Brady, seconded by Councilman Juicy. Any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number five, private detective license. Town Council will consider approval of a renewal of a private detective license from James Blair Barberi of 1845 Smith Street. Is Mr. Barberi here? Councilman.
Do we know if he is bonded?
If he is what?
Bonded. Will the clerk know? Is he bonded, Marion?
They usually put wrong information in when they pick up the license, but they usually show up as well, so I'm not sure.
I think it's, I think it was April, actually. Well, that's 2012.
April 24th, 2016.
Last year.
Says on the document, last year.
It was last year.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it might be April.
Yeah.
It's already old.
And the box, the box that's checked off says new, but then there's a renewal license number.
Yeah, it's a license number.
Considering he's not here, do I have a motion to continue this matter?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made by Councilwoman Brady, seconded by Councilman Fiola. Any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number six, peddler license. Town Council will consider the approval of a peddler license from Keith Lambert, DBA New England Novelty to Sell Novelties at Naughty Park for the Independence Day celebration. Is Mr. Lambert here?
Keith is my son-in-law, so I was sent here to explain that this isn't for fireworks or stuff. It's novelty items at Naughty Park, July 3rd and 4th.
Your name is sir? What was that? I'm sorry, I didn't catch it.
What was that?
What was your name again?
Neil, N-E-I-L, Neil Shaw.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Shaw? Councilman?
What kind of novelties? It says novelties, but I don't sure what kind.
Those little hand spinners, that's an added thing, but it's called fidget spinners. The rest of the items are basically little handheld light-up stuff. Kind of looks like a flashlight, that's like a wand.
Or Mr. Lambert came last month, correct?
I got a copy of the papers that he sent in.
And we asked him, he had to get approval from the Recreation Department at Naughty Park.
He was? He pretty much goes there every year.
Okay, all right. Okay, he has everything he's... I just wanted to make sure. Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made by Councilman Fiola, seconded by Councilman Di Lorenzo. Any further questions?
Just on the license...
Councilman?
Just on the license, it does expire before the 4th of July, so I'm sure he'll, your son will be having an updated, applying for an updated retail license, retail sales license as part of the necessary requirements for renewal.
An updated tax one?
Yeah.
I actually...
This right here, sir, the retail sales permit, he must have already sent again because it's... This right here, the permit to make sales, and it expires 6/30/17.
He gave me a...
That's the one.
That's it.
If that's the updated one, that's the expiration date on it.
This one here says it expires 6/30/17.
Yeah, so just make sure he's sent in his form and do, we had to do it together, the new one, before July 4th.
Okay.
Okay.
So you guys have a copy of the new one?
Yes.
You want him to batch you a copy of the new one?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number seven, Land Trust, Hobson Avenue Property received a request for discussion and possible vote on the Land Trust Hobson Avenue project from Land Trust Chairperson Ken Conti.
We had, the Land Trust had put together a letter that we had provided to you last month requesting the release of Land Trust funds to perform a boundary and topographic survey of our property on Hobson Street. As you know, Hobson Street has been the topic of our interests over the last year with the neighborhood and the Land Trust trying to put together a small pocket park, or just determine what the best use for the property is with the neighborhood. And we are in the process of putting together, at least developing ideas and concepts for that property, and we feel that the next step, or the best step in our due diligence process, is to do a boundary and a topographic survey so that we can fully understand our rights on the property, if there are any restrictions, and also we have developed a concept plan that the topographic survey will assist with the designer if it comes to that at the next step. So we're hoping that the Council will approve us to release the funds to do that survey. I do have a proposal from the, I believe it's Lou Federucci and Associates, who I believe is under contract with the town. They provided me with a proposal today for $4,650 to do the two surveys. I know in the letter, we had estimated approximately $1,500, but Mr. Federucci let us know there's a little bit more than that, so I would increase the request to $4,650.
So this is just to survey the land?
That's all, just do a survey and mark the property boundaries.
Because I know, I'm not speaking for the councilman in the district, because I know they've been contacted as well, but there were certain neighbors on Hobson Street that were concerned about this project that came here to speak tonight, so I just want to hear what they have to say about the project, then we'll get back to whether or not we can survey, release the funds, survey the land.
Right, and just, you know, to reiterate, there's really no project right now, we're just...
Okay.
At the beginning phases of what we call due diligence.
Okay, thank you very much.
Come to stay here?
No, you can sit, you have a seat. Go ahead, sir. Just state your name for the record. Yeah.
Keith Grimes, anyone else know, supporting neighbors, Mark and Mike Lewis here from AD2 Stanley. I have a list of objections for this particular project and the way the Land Trust is managing their projects.
Mr. Grimes, can you just speak into the microphone there?
Yeah.
You can take it out if you like.
Oh.
There we go.
You do have a list of these objections in front of you. I'll go through them real quick. Mr. Conti's asked for funding for a survey. That is in violation of ordinance 1610, chapter 260, section 16, which you have a copy of on page three of the note I gave you. They state that before any project is implemented, the Land Trust must present to the Council a plan with costs and timelines. The reason for that is that Mr. Conti's asking for money to do a job. If you give him that money, well, down the line, he's gonna, you're gonna feel obligated to give him the rest of this, the money for his project, and he hasn't yet budgeted it. He doesn't know what it's gonna cost, because he's not done a plan, and he doesn't know what the project's gonna entail. He had a video rendering done that he put on YouTube that didn't take into account an easement, that therefore, again, he would have to have that work redone. And because he asked the guy to do the rendering, is that not an ethics situation? The guy's not gonna do it for nothing, is he? Even with all that implication? Myself and Mark represent 50% of the computers, and we don't want mess in this park. We feel it would be bad. We feel we should have a greater weight in the decision-making process. We did submit a petition to you guys way back in August that had 18 names on it that said, "We don't want a park." And I don't think anybody has referenced that. The Land Trust have certainly ignored it, and they knew about it. I don't believe the park is needed. Everyone in suburban North Providence has got a yard. Why the hell do they need a park? You know, it's a park without a purpose. If you do some internet research, you'll find that a lot of suburban parks without a purpose sit there dead. I personally believe there's also a zoning conflict. Hobson Avenue is zoned, I believe, RLN Residential, and it's my interpretation of the zoning laws that parks should be put in OS areas, open spaces. And there's an excerpt down there in the written objections from the zoning laws that states, state that. I'm appalled at the way the Land Trust have gone about the business. For example, there's an easement on the property, they didn't know about it, they didn't have a survey done when they bought the property. Come on, everybody has a survey done when they buy their property. You know, is it not 101? Use of tax dollars. Well, so far, this has cost you $3,000 to clear the property out. I think Mr. Conti's asking for $4,650 to do the survey, don't know if that's a class one or class two. Then he's gonna want the rocks removed, and then he's gonna want landscaping. So I'm guessing, and I'm not landscaper, $30,000, $40,000, $50,000. Could that money be better spent elsewhere in the town, on the real need it, who people really need it, than a pet pocket park? I step back about things like this, and I go, this kid's going to school, he can't afford lunches. Isn't this money better spent elsewhere? Finally, I learned that the Land Trust's schedule for implementing this project in their heads is two to three years. Is that fair to have an intermittent disruption next to my property for that length of time? I don't think so. Add on to that, the one year that they've already taken since they cleared the property, that property was cleared last June, and up to now, they've done bugger all to it. Should they decide to reject their project in its entirety, myself and my wife will contribute some trees to screen the property off. We would like to see it left in its natural vegetation, its natural state, and clean around the edges. Thanks for listening, guys.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Grimes? Would anybody else like to speak on this matter? You can come to the microphone, just state your name for the record.
Yeah, my name's Mike Lewis. I gave you a copy of Providence, I went to Providence Water, and they don't want no digging or planting or anything in this property. Can you just have a copy of it?
Yeah.
That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
My name's Dave Westcott, I'm the council planner. I just want you to know that that easement isn't on the Land Trust property, it's on the property next to the Land Trust property. There is a small 10-foot section of the Land Trust property in the corner that that easement nicks, and that's one of the reasons we want to complete a survey. We appreciate the support of the need for a survey, so we know all easements and all site features. Easement, class one survey will reveal all easements standing in place, and we'll be able to show where that easement actually is. Thank you.
So there, let me just get this straight. You're all set, Mr. Westcott. The vote here tonight would just be to release the funds for a survey only, we're not approving any project or anything like that. You guys would have to come back before the Council, before any project.
That's correct. The current ordinance 16010 requires us to provide you with a complete plan and a cost estimate and a schedule for any project we undertake. What we want is the funding to produce that plan and schedule and cost estimate, so we can submit it to you, and you can decide if you think that's a good use of Land Trust funds or not.
Okay, so this is just for a survey?
At this point, all our, all we're requesting is the survey.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Westcott while he's up there?
No. Thank you for the clarification.
Do I have a motion to approve the funds for the survey only?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Brady, seconded by Councilman DeStefanis. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, item number eight, block party. Town Council will consider the approval and permission for residents of Plymouth Road to have a neighborhood block party on July 2nd, 2017. Is anyone here from Plymouth Road?
Patricia and Philip Pascal.
Thank you.
Patricia and Philip Pascal.
This is the block party, neighborhood party? You have every... Okay, I have no issue with it. Any other councilmembers have questions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Juicy, seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any further questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you.
Have fun.
Enjoy.
Item number nine, Highland Avenue Cottage Street, receive request from Ken Pansiera to appear to address the condition of the, and the possibility of paving Highland Ave and Cottage Street. Mr. Pansiera, just state your name for the record.
Ken Pansiera, 34 Highland Avenue, North Providence. So I've owned the house for 20 years, my grandparents owned the house 20 years before that. If you're familiar with Highland Avenue, it's bottom of the hill on the corner of Highland and Cottage. Over the years, the seasons have taken toll of the pavement in that particular area, so I'm just looking for an opportunity to get it paved. I've got pictures here, can I bring some up?
Has anybody any opportunity to take a look at the area, since I talked to...
I'm familiar with the area. Looks like it was previously repaired, and you're at the bottom of the hill, correct?
Correct, yeah.
So everything runs down, and it's taken its toll over time.
Especially today with the rain and the topsoil and everything else. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Pansiera while we're doing the photos?
The only question I got is, would the school gonna be built over there? Is that near the school, with the schools?
I'm not sure about that. It's Maguire that's close to me. Is there a school gonna be built there?
Maguire, yeah.
Yes.
That's, that's gonna be a new school.
In the same area? The same, the same location? Yeah, so it's right around the corner.
Yeah, they're gonna tear that school down. I'm wondering, are we gonna, is, are they gonna be doing any paving of the roads?
I don't know.
Chief?
Chief.
Mr. Chairman, I was privy to be at a meeting the other night. There's a strong possibility there'll be some road construction there while they're doing the road. You're gonna have heavy equipment going over there in the next month or so. They're scheduled for about a month from now to start demolition of that property.
It's private.
Yeah, well, I don't know if they're gonna be using both sides of that. Now, I don't know exactly where you live, so I'm, I'm really shooting in the dark.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, well, like I said, there's a strong possibility you'll have some heavy equipment going over there, so I really don't know. By the way, I don't select streets to be paved, but I'm sure there's gonna be a lot of utility cuts there, probably some new sewer cuts there, electrical cuts, water cuts. There's gonna be a lot of activity there within the next 18 months. I'd have to accommodate the neighbors in the, in the area, so I could speak on behalf of the administration right now. We do the best to keep your area, you know, straightened out, but I think you have an advantage if there's a new school there, the possibility of doing a road there might be a little, the percentage might be a little higher than...
You have an opportunity, take a drive by the area.
Yeah, I will, I will. I've been down there, but I mean, when I go down, I'm not just paying attention to the roads, you know? Okay? But there will be construction. About 20 years ago, I had a water pipe replaced, and what you see there in the front is where they carved into it, and now it's coming up, so, you know. So any opportunity there would be to pave that particular area would be appreciated.
Maybe, Chief, we could send the crews out? 34 Highland Ave. Maybe we could send the crews out and have them patch all the holes and... Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That brings up a good point. When they're, when they're doing these schools, they're gonna have to get into, they're gonna have to start ripping up certain streets to get to paving. So we should be asking them if their, you know, building manager, Gil Bane, can provide us with a list of streets that are gonna be affected.
We should send a letter to the school department on that.
Is that in their budget?
And then what happens? Are we responsible? Like, you know, obviously, they'll, they'll put the street back, but not to the man of that, you know, National Grid was ripping it up on the wall, they have to do half the street. They should be responsible.
Chief, are we, are we responsible, the administration, are we responsible for, like, the streets after these trucks go on for the building of the schools, or is that part of the contract?
No, I don't think the road is part of the, the construction of the schools unless they tear up roads.
That's something, big dig for sewers and...
Yeah, well, if we, if we have to put sewers in, they'd have to pave it. I mean, they're gonna pave it. The water department does work, they reimburse us for money, and then we pave it. Any patches you see that the water department does, they'll, they'll patch it temporarily, and they give us money to patch it, not do the road now, patch that, and naturally, we patch it, like, with the finish coat. National Grid, if they do any cuts, they usually will pave up to the middle of the street, so... And in the past, we've had a few streets where if National Grid lets us know which street they're gonna be doing construction, we try to coordinate it with our people, so instead of us paying for whole street, they pave half, we pave half, and we get it done, you know, we get the whole road done.
But has this, I guess the question is, you know, when the, when the school department hired Gil Bane as their construction manager, they would be able to tell which roads are gonna be affected?
Oh, there's no question about it. I, I, listen, I'm not a contractor or an architect, but I could tell you, there'll probably be road construction all around that area of the boat schools, probably Stephen Only and, and Maguire.
Because around Stephen Only, didn't we just repave Salem Drive last year?
Yeah, we just did Salem Drive, so I mean, why not, you know, Salem Drive has been done, but I think, I think the possibility of having, you know, doing that, so you're not gonna, I mean, it would be like buying a new suit and wearing old shoes if you don't pave around the school after you, you know, put a brand-new school up. So the possibility of doing those roads is high, you know? And by the way, that, a recommendation, and I'm sure the administration will consider it, but I, I think it makes sense that, but I don't want to stand there and say, oh, don't worry about it, the roads are gonna be repaved, but it's not gonna look real good if we have a brand-new school, like, $25 million, and then the roads are not paved around it, so I would say that the strong possibility are gonna be done.
Okay, I think, I think we should send a letter to the school department, asking them for a copy of the contract with Gil Bane, and to see what they...
You know what, even if it's not part of the contract...
And to see if what their plan is for the roads.
The town should make that a priority. By the way, that's only a recommendation from the chief of staff, not from an elected official, but I would, I would say that would should, should be a high priority.
Okay, a motion's been made to send a letter to the school department by Councilman DeStefanis. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Brady. May it, do you want to speak?
Yeah, so in talking with the town planner, that Cottage Central and the side street, that little side street is Eldon, so that those are scheduled to be paved.
Okay.
So now, if in fact, you know, Cottage to a certain point, I think that's the question, how far up Cottage is gonna be paved. If we gotta go another couple hundred feet to pick up the bottom of Highland where it comes down, then we'll have to discuss that with them, but if there was ever a time to, you know, do some paving there, I think now's the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 10, Veterans Only Parking. Councilman Fiola requests discussion and vote regarding Veterans Only Parking. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ironically, today's the anniversary of D-Day, and I have this on the agenda. I put this on the agenda because I want to have the town show a sign of respect, not that we don't already, but I want to have a sign of respect for all of our veterans, and by having a Veteran Only Parking, one designated spot at Town Hall and one at each of the town parks, and I want this in the form of an ordinance, so I'm making a motion to send this to the ordinance committee.
Second.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Fiola, seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 11, School Residency Policy. Councilman Fiola requests discussion and vote regarding school residency policy. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I placed this on the agenda because I have some factual numbers before me. I placed this on the agenda because I have some factual numbers before me. I wanna read into the record that I received from the school department regarding children that are attending schools in North Providence that do not reside in the town. And I just wanna read into the record some numbers. Two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year, there were one hundred and thirty inquiries made to our town's truant officer. Of those, forty were valid, not residing in the town. Current school year, there were approximately one hundred and fifty to one hundred and sixty inquiries made. Approximately twenty-five to thirty were valid, with twenty additional pending. There's also one instance of the town was paying for a charter school where the child did not reside in the town. So what I am proposing is any homeowner that knowingly allows someone to use their address to use one of our schools that does not belong in the town will lose their homestead exemption. For whatever period of time, we can iron that out in Ordinance Committee. So I make a motion to send this to the Ordinance Committee.
I'll second it.
And I just wanna say, the popularity of North Providence, we have a ninety-seven percent graduation rate to high school, two new schools that we were just talking about, urban ring community, we have more and more people that wanting to come to utilize our school system.
That's a great point, Councilman. Glad you brought that up. So a motion's been made by Councilman Fiola, seconded by Councilman... Do you see any other questions on it? Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've heard a lot of the same stories, and I wouldn't actually be surprised if the numbers are higher than that. I think that's just probably, that's what's documented.
That was just what was reported, so...
Right. So my only question is, how would we handle, or what are your thoughts on handling property owners who own rental properties who don't get a homestead exemption but are letting people use that address for residency?
The owners, from what I understand, need to sign an affidavit stating that that child does reside there prior to them entering the school. So I think there'd be other issues if they're known to falsify an affidavit. I mean, we can also add, maybe adding the penalty of a misdemeanor. We can address that in the Ordinance Committee.
Yeah, I think that's something we should address, 'cause there's a lot of property owners who don't actually live in the town but are willing to sign off on something 'cause they're afraid...
Absolutely.
They think they won't lose anything.
Exactly.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Guys have it. Chief, did you wanna?
Yeah, just one more information I'll refer to, so listen, the term, but I think, based on my past experience as a school committee member, I think a child lives there if he lays his head there and stays there and sleeps. Is that true, Slutser? Yeah, so keep that in mind when you do the...
Say that again, Dick. Say, Dick.
He said the child, they lay their head there, they're out of the...
Yeah.
We can iron out an ordinance.
Okay, we took the vote, so, all right. Item number twelve, Drainage/Flooding Issues on Arrow Street. Councilman DeStefanis requests discussion and possible vote on drainage/flooding issues on Arrow Street and surrounding areas. Councilman?
Mr. President, Arrow Street runs off of Palm Street. For anyone not aware of where Palm Street is, it's on the corner of Middle Spring. Palm is where Jiffy Lube is. So essentially, what occurs is when we get high rain, the water runs down the front part of Arrow Street, and then Arrow Street basins off from a decline about sixteen feet, twenty feet, and then it starts an incline. So what's happening is you have two hills on Arrow Street that water's running down. As Councilman Fiola eloquently put it, two topics ago, things run downhill, and there's nowhere for this water to go. There is a drain there, but the drain needs to be connected to the storm drain, which is on Esther Street. So I put this on the agenda because I was called by a few residents, and when I went down the previous rainstorm, that was pretty, pretty big flooding, there were people's cars in their driveway that half the tire was underwater. So for six or eight residents to constantly come out of their house every time it's raining and see puddles on their front lawn and on their driveway, we need to address the problem. So I'm gonna make a motion to send a letter to the administration, asking them if they could have an engineer go down to Arrow Street and take a look at how we can direct them out.
Motion's been made by Councilman DeStefanis. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Guys have it. Item number thirteen, Current Tax Rate and Current Revaluation. Councilman DeStefanis requests discussion and possible vote on the current tax rate and current revaluation. Councilman?
Mr. President, I'll start off by repeating what I said earlier this evening when we were in the budget process. I am adamantly opposed to a tax increase. And I'm not saying that we're headed in that direction, but of late, every time you read the breeze, and I know, you know, not everything's accurately depicted sometimes, but last four or five weeks in the breeze, that's all we've heard about, is this issue's a tax increase, that issue's a tax increase. So I understand that Mr. Kane is currently preparing the tax rolls, and I understand he's not certifying them until the fifteenth. But I also put on here the current reevaluation. We went through reevaluation. I'm gonna say, don't hold me to this, that forty percent of the town has been reevaluated where their evaluations are increasing. It's great. We're coming back to normal levels. But I'm a little concerned on two sides of this. One, we're gonna bring in more money that we don't know about. Or two, we have the ability bringing in more revenue, that we could've dropped the rate. And I don't wanna start that conversation because then people will be hopeful of it. But what I wanna do is, before we fully pass this budget, I'd really like to send this... I make a motion to send this to the Finance Committee that once Mr. Kane certifies the roll, that we study this, because I really think it's very important at this point in time, especially considering we just came out of reevaluation.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman DeStefanis, seconded by Councilman DiLorenzo. Any questions? Chief?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the meeting's okay, just don't try to debate that you send the tax rate on.
Not at all.
Normally, ask that, otherwise, we're gonna have a shortfall.
But if I'm, but if I'm correct to say, he stated that he'll have the roll certified on the fifteenth.
They don't usually certify that on the fifteenth.
Well, in all, in all honesty, Chief, three times, even tonight, he said it was the fifteenth. So we should be able to have the... So we should be able to have the meet on the sixteenth, whenever.
There's a couple of things. There's a couple of issues with the budget this year that we've never had before.
Dino, you should notice, we don't understand. We don't know where they're going with the exemption and the taxes. The speaker's got a three-point thing. We don't know, you know, what he's gonna do with that, so... That could affect our budget one way or the other. And, but like I said, when he certifies the road, say he certifies it by the fifteenth, as long as it doesn't affect the date where the tax bills normally go out, so you don't have a shortfall in revenue, that's all. I think we're all right. That's all.
Okay, a motion's been made to send this to the Finance Committee by Councilman DeStefanis, seconded by Councilman DiLorenzo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Guys have it. Item number fifteen, Salvatore Mancini Resource and Activity Center.
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Oh, fourteen, I'm sorry. Councilman DeStefanis requests discussion and possible vote on sidewalks along Douglas Avenue. Councilman?
Mr. President, essentially, I put this on the agenda, not only walking Douglas Avenue, riding my bike, but I've had a constituent who actually fell off his bike because of the uneven surfaces on the sidewalks, fell into the street, you know, thank the Lord, someone was there to pick him up before a car came by. Very busy street in the town, and the concrete sidewalks, certain sections are damaged, certain sections have lifted because of the tree roots. So I contacted DOT. Well, DOT's explanation to me is, we maintain the road. We don't maintain the sidewalks. That's the responsibility of the town. So I'd like to make a motion to send the administration a request to take a look at certain sections on Douglas Avenue, preferably around Fitzhugh and preferably around Brook Farm Road and West River Parkway, as both sections are pretty damaged.
Okay, a motion.
You're laughing, it's a hazard, Dick. Yeah, oh, okay.
DOT. Gee, that doesn't sound...
And I defer again to the legal... To the best of my knowledge, the sidewalks are the responsibility of the homeowner or the property owner in that area. Now, it's somewhere in, I might even still have it, because this question came up so many times that I had it right on my desk, and I will check it out tomorrow. By the way, I'm not an elected official. I have nothing to do with the budget. If you guys wanna start doing sidewalks and open that door, you better not adopt this budget.
I mean, when they redid Middle Spring Avenue, they...
They did, they did all the sidewalks. They just did all the sidewalks on, on... On Oscar Tucker Avenue. They're doing all the sidewalks in Providence, all the way down by the old woman in the entrance.
All of a sudden, they're not responsible for...
I don't know. It's just like, I don't know, it's a gray area, but I, there is an ordinance on the books, and I will be happy to get it and forward it to you, but I'm sure, Mary Ann, you could probably get it, it's on the sidewalks. And I might still have it on my desk, 'cause, not recently, but in the past, I've answered that question so many times. But if you trip on the sidewalk in front of your house, I'm gonna assume that you're gonna be responsible for it. I don't know how you feel about that, Council.
I'll remove the motion and send a letter to them.
You could send us the letter.
No, no, no. I'd like to make a motion to refer this to the Finance Committee, 'cause, one, maybe we can, I'd like to invite DOT to the meeting, and number two, maybe we can figure out a way that we can get grant money to stop fixing these sidewalks.
You know, you could, your grant money could always, you could always do whatever you want if you get grant money. But what I'm saying is, you're gonna have the same issue with sidewalks that you have with roads. Once you start doing one sidewalk, we have six hundred seventy-eight roads in town. So of the six, seven hundred seventy-eight roads, if we wanted to pave every single road in the state at one time, you couldn't do it. First of all, there's not enough contractors to do it, you don't have enough time to do it, and you don't have enough money to do it.
And I, and I understand that. I truly do.
So it's the same with sidewalks. You, you wanna, you know, it's fine.
But in my opinion, we have to start.
And I'm not opposed to doing the sidewalks.
We have to start somewhere.
Well, if you wanna start that program, you're in a legislative body, you could do it. I mean, you wanna start doing sidewalks, do mine. I don't even have a sidewalk. Put a sidewalk in front of my house. I don't have a sidewalk.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman DeStefanis to send to Finance.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Guys have it. Item number fifteen, Salvatore Mancini Resource and Activity Center. Councilman DeStefanis requests discussion and possible vote on the Salvatore Mancini Resource and Activity Center. Councilman?
Mr. President, earlier this evening, when we were on the budget, I mentioned this item that's on the agenda. Reason for placing the item on the agenda this evening was to just bring the council up to date as to what has been occurring. A meeting was called, I'll repeat it again, a meeting was called, myself, the council president, two members from the senior center board, and the administration sat down to try to iron out some differences, to try to figure out what the solution is, because at the end of the day, our seniors, you know, are gonna be impacted by this. And I don't think any one of us here wants that. I don't think any one, any one of us here wants to impact any senior or the center. The only thing we want is answers to questions. Be it that as it may, we met, some sort of, an understanding was made, and basically, my second reason for putting this on the agenda this evening is, they were to go back to their board, they were to explain what that understanding was, agreement, understanding, however you wanna term it, and I haven't heard anything formally. So now, tonight, we found out that they rejected that, and they're now asking for six to eight months. That's, that's my only reason why I put it on the agenda, more about communication and, you know, this is what happened, you know, for those of you that weren't there.
I will say that I am, I was there that night, and I applaud you for putting that meeting together. Councilman, I didn't speak on the matter earlier because I wanted you to speak on it first, since you did call the meeting. I will say I was disappointed that they did not accept the deal, and now it's being painted as this council is the one to close the place down. As we all know, that is not the case at all. The deal that was offered was the senior center would eventually become a town department. They then would, all the employees, which I actually had concern over, as we see this budget is growing on a daily, you know, a yearly basis. I've been on this council for six years, and the budget has increased every year. I think when I started, it was somewhere around ninety-three million dollars. It's up to ninety-nine million dollars now. What is it gonna be in five years? So I really wasn't too pleased with taking on more town employees. However, if it was going to put this issue to rest, I would make an exception. So the agreement was, all the employees at the senior center would become town employees. That is really good for them. I don't understand why they wouldn't accept that. No one would lose their job, and services would continue. Unfortunately, they did not, they did not accept the deal. I don't know why. I was alerted to it by a text message that the board voted it down. So here we are, stuck at square one again. We have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a contingency fund in the council budget, as you know. I believe that money should stay there until we hear what their counterproposal is. Now they're saying they need six to eight months. I am not an attorney. They are saying they need six to eight months to dissolve the corporation. I say the money remains there until we see what they have to say.
I'll tell you what bothered me on that whole dissolving of the corporation and everything. She talked about selling all the furniture and everything. Is she gonna turn over to the town an empty shell of a building with nothing in it?
That's exactly what it sounds like.
That's exactly what it sounded like.
Mr. President, and trust me, I'm not speaking for the senior center. I think, from a legal perspective, they own, that's tangible property that they own, and I don't think that it's...
No, no, we own the property.
No, no, we own the, we own the real estate. We don't own the furniture and the paintings and all the other items that are in the building. So she even said, and again, I'm not trying to stick up for her, I wanna make that clear, I'm just reporting what I heard and what I believe, is that she even actually said that if the town is to take it over as a town department, maybe the best way to handle that would be to sell it to the town or otherwise deed it to the town, transfer ownership of it, so the town, if they do take it over, doesn't enter an empty building. And I think that's an important distinction to make, and I think there are legal ramifications to what we're trying to do, and it's not as simple as a two-week process.
How do we know that the town hasn't paid for that stuff already?
I think that would be on the records. That would be on the records.
Right? It's gonna be on the records that we haven't seen as of yet.
No, what I'm saying, the mayor's a great authority, that's why it's not... Mayor?
Go ahead.
There's a couple of things. Again, I've said this so many times, but I'll say it one more time. I was one of the original people who started the senior center, okay? There was about twelve of us. Started the senior center next door to the Town Hall here in the storefront. I don't know if you would recall that, but that's where the senior center started. Maybe thirty people. Senior Center turned into one of the best senior centers in the state, as far as I'm concerned, physically. We could all agree or disagree on the management of the senior center or what we're providing for the seniors, if we could provide more. But if, I have the same question you have, Councilman DiLorenzo. How do we know what the town paid for at the time or who paid for it? And by the way, if you sell those assets, what would you do with those funds?
Well, that's why I called.
What would you do with the funds? The common sense thing is not to sell it and leave it in there for the seniors, if you're really concerned about the seniors. That's number one. But if it's not the town's property, and whoever, the board wants to sell it... But if it's not the town's property, and whoever, the board wants to sell it, what do you do with it? You donate to some other charity, or you donate it to some, I don't think anyone could put that money in their pocket individually. The other thing is, and I might have misinterpreted what Karen said, I don't have an issue with Karen. She said that you need six to eight months, I don't know if that's true or not, I'll leave it to the legal minds if that's true or not. But, it seemed that, to me, I interpreted that she said, they're not opposed to turn it into a town department, but it would take about six months to do that. How you do it, that's another question. Legally, I'm sure there's some procedure you would have to follow. If that's documented, and I'm not speaking on behalf of the mayor, now he just came in, if that's documented somewhere, that in six months it will become a town department, then, you know, decent people can get together and make that happen, I think. And it could become a, a town department without any disruption of the services that we're providing. I asked a question at the last meeting that we held, and it was unanimous. I asked the question, is, everyone here, anyone here satisfied with the answers that we received from the senior center that we asked? And not one person said they were satisfied with all those questions. And tonight, I would say, asked the same question. Is there anyone in here who wants to close the senior center? And I think it's, I think that would be a unanimous vote also, 'cause no one wants to close the senior center. It's just a feeling of the mayor and the administration that we could run it better, more efficiently, and give the seniors more services, for less money. I mean, you, like, and like I said, I'm not an elected official, I don't have a vote on it, but I've been dealing with the senior center for so many years, that there's always room for improvement, and I think we could improve some of the services by giving it, and I think we could do it for less money, based on what research that we've done in the other senior centers around the town, I think, well, a little high in some areas. And that's no reflection on anyone, there, you start running it, you run it the way you do, you get used to run it that way, and everybody's happy, and then, so, you gotta look at it once in a while and review the services. So, Mayor, I think you wanted to say something.
Mr. Chairman, thanks for your time, members of the council. I didn't address this council earlier at that budget session, because I just didn't think that it was the right thing to get into on us and them. But I will tell you this, I'm not sure we need six months. And the thing that really bothers me is that these seniors are being scared that the center is going to close. That is not going to happen. If that center is to close, the only people to blame will be the management there, the board of directors. And the other thing that really upset me tonight, standing back there, is that the director did all the talking here. Talking for the entire board. There were three board members in the audience here tonight. Not one board member came up here and addressed this council. The board is in charge of that center. They're responsible for running that operation. And for anyone to get up here, other than a board member, and speak for the board, I think is a travesty, to be very, very honest with you, and I think you can see what's going on. And as far as, you know, a little bit of time, oh, to sell, that, there shouldn't be a thing sold at that facility, because my bet is, a hundred percent of the furniture, any of the equipment there, has been purchased by the taxpayers of this town. The last five, six years has been at least five-hundred thousand given to that center. Prior to that, I think their total budget was around seven-thirty-eight, don't know me to the number, it's very close to that. And, you know, to buy time, or use that for a reason, because, you know, to dissolve the 501(c)(3), that begs a question in my mind. So I think at this point in time, this council, our office, you know, needs to agree that the sooner that, that facility comes under town control, the much better off, not better off, the much better off, the seniors, the seniors that attend that facility will be. So, again, for those reasons, I, you know, ask you to think about this, and state across, and as you know, those people that attended the meeting that night, it was agreed upon that it's the right thing for that center to become a town department. We were told that more than once at that meeting. And the other thing is, and by the way, I have, I have no problem with Mr. Fleming or, or, or Mr. Peterson, they came to the meeting, they spent some time there, and I thanked them for that. They were nowhere to be found tonight. So, at least we could've got some support as to what was discussed at the meeting, we don't have that, the director wasn't there, and it's all hearsay. I know what I heard, I think I, you know, Ray, I can't speak for you, I think you know what you heard, and, Mr. President-
You were out in the hallway, but I did state for the record.
Please?
I did state for the record that, though I was opposed to more employees becoming town employees, we did agree, and it was a good deal for the center, and it would not have closed, and I was kinda disappointed that, that was not supported. And I think, you know, this council being blamed, I mean, I don't wanna repeat myself again, but this council being blamed tonight for closing the center was, is pretty sad, when the deal that was reached would've been good for all parties involved, and when you're okay with spending, you know, bringing more people on board, and I'm not, but I agreed to it, you know, it, it was good for, it was good for the, it was good for the employees of the center, you know, and-
Mr. Chairman, I knew that there were a few of the council people, and you know, when I sat down and thought about it, you know, the concern for people's well-being, okay, so if that's what needs to be part of a good, solid agreement, that everyone stays the course, until such time as maybe to attrition, or, or whatever, there could be some, some structural changes there. But, I don't know what else, what else that they're, they're looking for, in other words, if we said that we wanted to come in there, okay, everybody's, tomorrow, we're not saying that, but here's the board now, saying, they're gonna start laying off people.
They did today.
They did, I mean, and by the way, that's not fair, that's not right. So, at this point, Mr. Chairman, if any, and members of the council, if anyone is out of work there, you know, as of tomorrow, that, that board should, should be ashamed of themselves, because they have the, the opportunity right now to just say, okay, for the betterment of the seniors, not try to use the seniors and try to scare them, this is not right. But, you know, thank you for your time, I mean, we've been beating this up for too long, as far as I'm concerned. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Mr. President, one, one last-
Councilman?
Yeah, one, one last.
Go ahead, Ray. Councilman, go, go ahead.
So, so, the, the other reason that I scheduled that meeting was hearing that, hey, we're gonna start liquidating assets. I mean, think about that. The taxpayers of this town are not gonna understand that they're a 501(c)(3), and that by the time they've done liquidating that place, they're gonna give us back a shell. And what I wanted to say, and I didn't, 'cause I got tired of just sparring with them all night, during the meeting-
Well, that's one of the reasons why the mayor didn't get up at that point and say anything either, 'cause it would've just became, could become like a, a Bruja, you know.
So, we, we had all these people here this evening, thinking that we're hurting them, we're cutting them, but not one person here this evening looked at any board member and asked them, you're, you're literally gonna liquidate this place. And, and that is a good question. You liquidate it, you pay off your liabilities, what do you do with the balance? Do you donate it to the local Rotary Club? I mean, that, that to me makes no sense.
That doesn't make-
They won't donate it to the town.
Right, that's separate from the town.
What would they do with the assets, once they sell them?
They could sign the assets over to the town.
They could donate them back to the senior center, can't they?
Okay, so, 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 and I'm very, I'm very sorry that we're doing this.
You know what, it is not a lot of people-
I'm very sorry, but answer that question. The assets have a value, so they, they, we, they donate the assets to the town, or, or we, we put a monetary value on it, and the town buys them. What do they do with those funds?
They don't pay all the taxes.
Okay, and after, and after all the liability that we were willing to take on, after all the liabilities pay off, what do they do with the balance?
They don't pay the taxes.
It's, it's much easier than that.
I think that's where this issue started, because they got lawyers involved. That's where this issue started.
Any corporation, any corporation that's a 501(c)(3) and is to solve it, has a company with this void, that has to get paid, no matter how much.
Nope. Anyone who has, anyone who has something coming, I have to get-
I don't think this is the forum to discuss this at this point.
I, I have, I have one, one question, and I'm gonna be quiet, okay, Mr. Chairman? The, um, there was a debate, what was said at the meeting, and whether it was a, a handshake deal, or was an agreement that you guys made. Karen stood here tonight, and she was talking like she was talking for the board. Was she speaking for the board? Or does she have the right to come up here and speak for the board, if the board runs the senior center as a 501(c)(3)? So, on one hand, she's telling you, only the board makes the decision, and she's up here saying that she could make a deal where we close it in six months, and, did the board say that? There were three members of the board here in the room.
She did say today at the center that the board did say that they would try to resolve it in six months, but they can't think back.
But, I, but what I'm saying is, they, also members of that board said something, and they're saying that, oh no, that doesn't hold any water, so how do you accept the fact that she said it, the board said this, and she had all members of the board there today?
That's the problem, everybody says, speaks to-
It's hearsay, it's he said, she said.
And that's what I've, and that's what I've-
No, I heard what you said.
Because I had seen this to people crying in my system.
No, no, listen.
I apologize, we have to move on, this is not the forum for this.
If that's one thing, I, I, I think if there's one thing we all agree on-
I'm gonna move on, item number sixteen, board appointments.
No one wants to close the senior center, and no one wants to hurt any-
Town council discussion and possible vote with regard to the appointments to be made to the following boards.
I have one question. I have one question. What means, you know, who, who will be employees of the senior center, if there's gonna be layoffs?
We have no, nothing to do with that.
Nothing, we have nothing to do with that.
They would give layoffs to anybody.
Who was getting layoffs? Who gave layoffs?
My volunteer teacher was given a layoff for this one, the quilting teacher was given a layoff for what? Somebody else was given a layoff?
Are they volunteers, or they just, they sell?
No, this has to be, my volunteer teacher is still there, my, my volunteer teacher was there, but my superior teacher, and it is, but, the quilting teacher, and it was a high score in my own honor.
I know.
This, we gave it to my mom. I think, I don't know her name, she only got a little while, I think, when they were through, they had a meeting.
All right, we have council business to discuss, to conduct, please.
He's a weird, he's a union rep.
Yeah, I know, but, okay, item B, tax board of review. Do I have a motion to reappoint Lawrence Corente?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Brady, seconded by Councilman Juicy, any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The guys have it. Item number seventeen, claims submitted, town council discussion and possible vote with regard to the claims received from the following. Mr., Mrs. Edward Corville?
Corville.
Corville? Twenty-three, is that Born Avenue? This is odd. Twenty-three Born Avenue. Do I have a motion to, and Kristen Parata, nine West Lakeview Drive, do I have a motion to refer this to the Claims Committee?
So moved. We have any?
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Fiola, is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman DiLorenzo, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Yeah, I have it, item number eighteen, Claims Committee report. Town council discussion and possible vote with regard to the Claims Committee report, and approval and denial, or referral of claims within said report to be presented by Councilman Fiola.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I will, there's five claims, I will go through each one. Claim from Mr. Dzikowitz, 209 Lexington Ave, that was a claim in the amount of one-thousand dollars even, that claim is denied. Next claim, Simone, eighteen-hundred B, Middle Spring Avenue, that claim is denied. These are both for property damage. Next claim, Arpin, fifty-four Morgan Avenue, that claim is approved for three-hundred dollars, that's pothole damage. Next claim, Parata, that claim is for sprinkler head damage, that's approved for seventy-two And the last claim, Corville, is approved for one-hundred-and-nine dollars sprinkler head damage.
Okay, I have a motion to accept the Claims Committee report.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Juicy, seconded by Councilwoman Brady, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The guys have it. Item number nineteen, Town Council Chambers Refurbish Committee. Town council discussion and possible vote with regard to the report of the Town Council Committee to refurbish the Town Council chambers, and approval, denial, or referral of items within said report to be presented by Councilwoman Brady. Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented, and to send a copy to the administration with a letter asking for its assistance with alternative space when construction gets underway, or gets to a point when the chamber cannot be used.
Thank you, Councilwoman. A motion's been made by Councilwoman Brady, seconded by Councilman Juicy, any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The guys have it. Item number twenty, tax abatements under a thousand, Town Council discussion in action, possible vote for the approval of the list of tax abatements under a thousand received from the tax assessor, in the amount of six-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars and thirty-two cents for real estate, and a hundred-and-seventeen dollars and eight cents for motor vehicles. Do I have a motion to obey?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman DeStefanis, seconded by Councilman Juicy, any questions?
Go back to, go back to nineteen.
There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The guys have it.
Go back to nineteen.
Okay, I've been asked to go back to number nineteen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to add one more motion to item nineteen, and that motion is for the Town Council to send a letter to the Purchasing Board and Purchasing Agent to respectfully request that they expedite the process and approval of the items and services listed in the scope of work to accomplish this project, and to consider holding a special Purchasing Board meeting, if necessary.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilwoman Brady, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman DeStefanis, Mayor.
Just a quick discussion, Mr. Chairman, I understand there might've been some discussion the other evening, but, I don't know, I don't wanna chat with a couple of you guys, but I'd, I'd like to put it on next month's agenda to discuss the purchasing board, not as much the members of the board, but the procedure. It changed a couple of years ago, I think Mary Ann could attest to it, you know, where, you know, our hands are tied when we go out to bid. We go out to bid, so before we go out to bid, we need to get permission to go out to bid. So, think about it, you could go out to bid and not buy-
Didn't we change that back?
No.
You know what I'm saying?
I thought we changed it back.
What's that? No. So you, we could go out to bid and not purchase anything, just to find out how, what something's gonna cost. But now we need to get permission to go out to bid, gotta advertise a meeting, and I think it was all because of, you know, they wanted the meetings in the evening, in the meantime, we gotta pay some overtime, so, I'm just gonna ask you respectfully that you address that, take a look at it, if you think it needs to be, you know, continued the way it is, that's your call. But I think you need to talk to those people- But I think you need to talk to those people that are involved as to the timeline when we got to go out to bid for something.
We really never had any problems the whole week, right?
Please?
We never had any problems the whole week.
No, it wasn't, it was just an issue that, you know, the former president, you know, for some reason, this is what we need to do. It, it's become an issue, it's become a problem, so to say, time-wise, you know?
I got to say, Mr. President and Mayor, my first exposure to it was last night at the subcommittee meeting for the refurbished plan, and I, I couldn't believe how stagnant it is, and it's, it's, it's not conducive to getting anything done in a timely fashion, so I think we were going to propose addressing it ourselves.
Well, that, that's fine, I don't want to, you know, but I, I think you need to take a look at it. Thank you.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilwoman Brady, and seconded by Councilman DeStefanis. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The guys have it. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The guys have it.